...our regular open session for the board meeting of our special meeting on Tuesday, February 1st, 2011. We will begin with a flag.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Spanish translation provided by Vivian Rodriguez.
We also have headsets available for anyone who is hearing impaired, as noted on our screen. At this time, we'll take public comments on our, I guess not on our regular agenda, that will be later, so public comments at this time.
Yes, we have Kate Smith.
President Cordero and members of the Santa Barbara Board of Education, there is deep-seated and widespread school and government corruption in Santa Barbara County and in the Santa Barbara School Districts. There's rampant and severe retaliation. When Jonas Pizzito said that at a public podium, referring to David Gilbertson's lawsuit, "I had a video camera trained on Brian Sarvis." Truth well out, justice prevails, and love conquers all in an eternal conflict against humorless arrogance, illusory prestige, brute force, and primeval stupidity. That's my doctoral dissertation started at UC Berkeley in 1973, suggested by Margaret Mead. I'm dismayed that you would spend several meetings trying to choose a crony to pay $20,000 to $50,000 of public money to find a superintendent for the district when that is what you were hired to do. That's your most important responsibility in the early '90s. When our superintendent was ailing, Bill Saroni found Mike Caston, who was running away from a very powerful and devastating lawsuit. Then, several years later, when there was an ADA lawsuit, one of the biggest in the United States. When there was my lawsuit, there was Bill Hanselt's whistleblower lawsuit, and there was an affair of the superintendent. His wife found out, she insisted that he get out of Dodge. So, Michael Caston was brought over to a position that had been vacated by Bill Saroni. And Mike Caston, Diana Rigby, Bill Saroni and his cronies, and DA Tom Sneddon started the school-to-prison pipeline. When things got too hot for Michael Caston and he had to leave, Debbie Flores, Assistant Superintendent, needed to keep the lid on the corruption. When Bob Noel, a board member, insisted that there be a national search, Debbie Flores said in the news press, "If there's a search, then I will remove my name." So, there was a meeting. And when we met, the board was hoping she could be convinced to stay.
Thirty seconds.
But we got up, and it's a taped meeting. We said, "Good riddance. You didn't call in a national search, you didn't spend several meetings listening to your cronies. Brian Sarvis is not retiring. He will be placed in Bill Saroni's position when Bill Saroni retires early so that Brian Sarvis can run as an incumbent for the county superintendency." Please Google legal abuse syndrome. I am-
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
-a poster child for it. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Okay, before we begin with our presentations, are there any questions or comments from the board? Dr. Sarvis, would you like to introduce our candidates?
Good. Well, we have Ray &amp; Associates here tonight. They've been asked to make a 15-minute presentation, and at that point, then, to defer to the board for any questions that the board may have. And we're expecting to take just 45 minutes in total. I don't know that there are any other parameters. I think that was about it. Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't have, I met you, I don't have your names in front of me. Would you please come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Steve Triplet. I'm the Corporate Executive Director for Ray &amp; Associates.
Yes, my name is Noel Gallo, and it was a pleasure to be here with you, President Cordero, and Buenos Aires, and to the rest of you. I also have the blessing or the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education. I'm on the Oakland Unified School District Board of Education. Been there for 18 years, so I know how blessed you all are and what an opportunity it really is to serve. I've worked with Ray &amp; Associates for a number of years, and so, and I've also had the experience being in Oakland. That's when I first met them, and they were the search firm that we chose at that time to choose our superintendent coming out of receivership. So, I'm here, one is a reference, and at the same time, I've had experience working with them in Sacramento, Ontario, Montclair, and other districts here in California. And I'm also very happy to answer any questions.
All right, great. I love to pack it in front of each of the board members. It's kind of our Reader's Digest flip chart of the proposal that we had earlier provided for you. But right inside that is a form of why the Santa Barbara School District should hire Ray &amp; Associates. And that's what I'd like to focus on in our short time period, if we could. Okay? First thing about Ray &amp; Associates, we're a longtime firm. Firm started in 1976, and we've been doing executive searches all over the country since then. So, we've been at it over 35 years. The principal, Gary Ray, is still the principal of the company. And so, we're a national firm, and we've worked with outstanding districts all over the country. The largest recruiting network, and I can't stress that enough, we have over 140 associates across the country. And they're at all levels, K-12 education, higher ed, the national organizations. So, when we put out the word on Santa Barbara and say, "We're looking for the top people in the country to take a look at this district," those people really strongly actively recruit for our firm. No predetermined list. I can't tell you how important it is. We run a very open and objective process. We do have a database, just like every other firm. But I will tell you that we are nationally known for creating that open process where we get candidates from all over the country to take an interest. Profile, and I know that's a strong interest of this board, developing an accurate profile. We'll work with the board in whatever way you wish, meeting with as many groups as you wish us to, to get information. Once we acquire that information, we'll bring it back to the board in a data-driven report so that you'll see how specific groups within your community, you'll see what they felt was important in your next superintendent before you make that final decision on a profile. Okay? And I want to talk about our staff a little bit. Everybody here in your district has a job to do, and they're very, very busy, as well as board members. We're a unique firm in that we have a full-time staff. We're always available. And we're there to answer the questions of candidates, and that's why we feel we get so many outstanding candidates. We're there to answer the questions about the board, about the district, about the challenges that a person would face in this position. More completed files, including in-state candidates. We have a strong associate base in California. We will actively recruit in-state, as well as all across the country. In fact, Noel and others were just at the California School Board Association Convention. So, we're active in this state all the time. But I will tell you that we have averaged somewhere between 40 and 60 completed files for most positions across the country. We had some last year in the '80s. So, we have outstanding numbers. Noel already touched about our success in California. We worked with the Oakland District, we worked with Sacramento City, we worked with Ontario, Montclair, all three very successful searches. Screening process and background checks. The candidates need to be exactly who we say they are. That's the most important thing. So, in our screening and background checks, we not only check references, we ask all references for individuals who have a different opinion about those candidates. Because the candidates that come to you are already going to be in good jobs, and they've had to make those tough decisions. So, people are going to have differing opinions, and we want to know what those are and why they feel that way about the candidate. So, that's really important. But we feel our reference checking and background investigations are unparalleled. Once we complete that, we'll bring a written candidate report to the board on each of the semifinalists. So, if we present the board eight to 10 top individuals for their consideration, we'll have a written candidate report which documents their track record, their successes, their challenges, what their references said about them, what state association people had to say about their leadership capabilities. All that will be in the report, along with the documentation of all references contacted, everyone contacted. Okay? The next one is really critical, the consensus-building process for the boards. When you get down to that process of choosing semifinalists to interview, and then finally making that final decision on that top candidate, we use a consensus-building instrument that has been successful with boards all over the country. And if you really check our references, I think they will tell you that it helps the board come to focus on the candidate that meets their profile and the candidate that best has the skills to meet the challenges that you'll face in Santa Barbara. Customizing the interview process, we take care of all details, we do scheduling, we work with the candidates, we make sure that they have done their homework to be well-prepared before they come before the board. But we take care of all of the details on the interview process. Two-year guarantee. I guess I want to skip to that last thing. Several years ago in the industry, Ray &amp; Associates went to a one-year guarantee, and it was based on data. We check our data, our average placement is just under eight years. Okay? So, we feel really confident. So, we went to a one-year guarantee several years ago, and other firms then copied. And about five years ago, we went to a two-year guarantee. And again, it's based on our data. And we work with some of the largest districts in the country. So, you know, the tenure of some of those large districts has not been great over the years, but we feel confident about that. So, we do offer that two-year guarantee. Okay? So, that's just some of the top reasons. The second part of the presentation that I'd like to get to is this part right here, what sets us apart. Am I doing okay timewise? Am I hanging in there? Okay. All right. You're going to hear from four search firms tonight. And what's important is what sets us apart? Because a lot of the processes, you've read all the proposals, you're going, "Some of these things look similar." So, what sets us apart? Experience. Wanted to talk about, you know, we did talk about that we've been at it since '76. But I think what's unique about us is we continually change and hone our process to make it better every single year. You know, we constantly have planning meetings to make sure that we are staying on the top edge. And our, the candidates out there in the country, they really appreciate that, and they know where we are. District support. Our full-time staff, I cannot tell you, and they will correct me on there, you notice this says "highly qualified." We just used to have full-time staff up there, and they said, "Don't forget, we're a highly qualified full-time staff." You'll notice that we take great attention to detail, materials are well-prepared, candidates get their questions answered, and if the district calls us, you're always going to get an immediate response. And I can't believe, I can't tell you how districts respond to us all the time and say, "Wow, people just are right there. I call up, and the response is immediate." Candidate care. This is a phrase that we have put together, and we think this is really helps us draw not only the best people, but a great number of people. The communication with candidates starts the day one. So, if we were lucky enough to be able to work with the Santa Barbara Board, that trust, the candidates will start contacting us immediately, and we're always in communication. And the other thing we do with that, and just to give you an example, the AASA convention's coming. And I don't know if you noticed, we have advertised nationally, we are the only firm that we set up a reception room at AASA for a couple days to just meet with candidates. It's, we want to get to know them very well and put them at ease about, and giving them information about districts so that maintains their interest, we don't lose candidates through the process. Clarity. That development of the profile is so important to you as a board, and it's important to your stakeholders, that they feel good about what you're looking for, the qualities that you're looking for. And we have the team and the resources to come into a district and meet with whoever you wish. And one of the things that's always so unique is people comment to us all the time, "Wow, you developed a relationship with us, and you listened to us, and you took that information to the board." And that is just critical for you. Community involvement. I guess, similar to what we were just talking, but the key to this is we're going to be great ambassadors for the board. So, if we're out meeting with the community, you can rest assured that they're going to feel good about our conversations, and we're going to represent the board very well. So, we think we're great ambassadors. Candidate pool. And I'm just going to share one story with you. About a year and a half ago, we ended up doing a search in a suburban area in a similar district about five miles down the road that was doing a search at the same time. And we also interviewed with them, and they said, "Jeez, we just can't hire you. Our arch-rivals just hired you." You know, we're the same demographics, the same number of students, et cetera. The searches ended on the same day. The one district was presented 19 candidates and four finalists. We presented 51 candidates and 12 finalists. So, we feel very strong that we can attract a great number of highly qualified candidates. We're wrapping down, consensus building. Again, I'll share, this was another story, a Midwestern district that had been in great turmoil, contacted us about two years ago, and they said, "We need a superintendent in six weeks or less." So, we had to go in and really work hard with that district. And when I met with the board that night, the vote was 9-0. Okay? And they got up and started running out of the room to go to talk to the press. And I said, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. Where are you going? We want to go tell the press we voted 9-0 on something. We haven't voted 9-0 on anything for years." I said, "I think we should call the candidate first and make sure they're going to accept the job before you go down to the press." So, as soon as we made the call and got the acceptance, then they ran down the hall. So, that was good. I think just the big thing, we will tailor the search to meet your needs. We have been through this process for many, many years. We have a great number of outstanding associates. Stan Paz, Dr. Stan Paz could not join us tonight. He is our Western Regional Associate. But we have other folks in California. But our whole firm would be actively working for Santa Barbara. So, we're ready for questions.
Thank you very much. Well, we have approximately 25 minutes for question and answer with these gentlemen. So, we'll take our, we'll start with our questions. And I just want to remind us all that if somebody else asks a question, so our question has been asked and answered, we can maybe move on, and if we can save a little time we can, in case we want to have any closing comments. So, Mr. Heron, we can start with you.
Thank you very much for getting out of that cold weather and iron coming here. I mean, I'm sure it must be good.
There's a blizzard at home. I'm just the, I'm the happiest guy here tonight, I will tell you.
Okay. And thank you for a very quality proposal. It was high on my list, I can tell you that. I'm curious, who will be in charge of our search? Is there any, who's going to be the lead person in charge?
I will be the lead person for Santa Barbara.
Okay.
With Dr. Paz, Mr. Gallo, Anita Johnson also from California. So, we would have that team in play from day one.
Okay. And a couple things that, one thing that yours had was, help us in determining what a pay scale would be. None of the other had that. Can you amplify on that a little bit, plus?
Sure.
Just one other thing, you talk about very much that you seem to be in favor of a community forum where the candidates come to the community. That's at odds with other presentations. So, can you give us your full court present, why you think that's a good idea?
Now, that's more than one question at a time.
I know, it's a couple.
Let's talk about salary comparisons. What we try to do with districts is not only give you a local comparison, you know, with California districts of similar size and demographics, but also a national perspective on the salary. Because when you're out competing for top candidates, not only in the California candidates, but nationwide, you need that information so that when you set the salary, that it is competitive and you're going after the top people. But I want to share a little bit on that. The one thing that we do on that is even in the language of how you set a salary is important. You know, we talk about you don't want to set a range, because if you get into a range and then you don't give the top of that range, you're at odds with the candidate from minute one. So, we always try to get a salary that the board's comfortable with. But then the wording is "in the range of," because that allows the board then to base their final decision based on the credentials, experience, and background of the candidate. So, that's very helpful to the board. As far as community forums, if you get down to the final candidates, and we, again, will tailor this to the needs of the board. But if you get down to the final candidates, we have found it to be, one of the methods to be very successful is to allow community members to come in, offer questions, and they provide those to us, members of Ray &amp; Associates. We mediate that, or not mediate, but run that session and pose those questions to the candidates. So, this group of individuals from your community gets to hear the responses from each of the candidates. We do them one at a time, and then give feedback to the board. We have a feedback sheet where they can give you suggestions, saying, "I thought that was a strength of the candidate. I thought that was a concern of the candidate." We never ask them to rate the candidates, but that feedback that the board members can get from community members who get to see a superintendent candidate in action and answering their questions is often invaluable for board. But it's just one option for the board to choose. Some do that way, some don't, but we're, we feel it's been very successful in many of our searches.
You know, one of the advantages in working with Ray &amp; Associates is they'll customize your search based on the leadership. You're the leadership. And I, going through this experience in Oklahoma, we did is we, we wanted to establish ownership from the business community in our neighborhood. So, we allow, I'm sure some of you know Oakland, but we, we wanted to, since we were coming out of state receivership. Sacramento went through a similar experience where they wanted to invite the public to have the opportunity to ask questions of the three top candidates. And what we did through Ray &amp; Associates, we used the all-city council, the students got involved. So, they were able to basically facilitate the big public meeting, but Ray &amp; Associates controlled in terms of the receiving the questions and asking the questions of the three top candidates. And that seemed to work really well because the attendance was tremendous. We had like 400, 500 people show up. And just to listen, to meet, and to see who's out there that's interested in Oakland. And beyond the community forum, we also met with the business community, with the Chamber of Commerce, to get their feedback, their input in their buying. So, to make a long story short, Ray &amp; Associates will go as far as you would like them to in terms of the community process. And at the same time, some other districts will want to handle it all right here, in closed door, in closed session, and that's it. And where another district chose to even have an advisory before the board. So, the board chose an advisory member to sit on a committee, and they had the chose, the chance in closed session, interview the three top candidates. Then that committee made a recommendation to the board. And again, the board controls all the power. But it allowed the community to engage, to define, redefine a direction, the leadership of the district. And so, it's really, it's really how far this board wants to go in terms of opening up a process. But Ray &amp; Associates will work directly with you from the profile all the way to finalizing the contract for the superintendent. So, it's really on you as leaders, how far do you want to take it in Santa Barbara?
Okay, Ms. Lamont.
Thank you for your presentation. As you know, California schools are pretty unique in our own challenges that we have within California that might not be the same challenges that other states are dealing with. Can you give us some detail as how you think you could ensure a diverse pool of applicants, especially for schools in California? Because I know we're not like other schools or other states, per se, so I'm not sure folks are jumping on board to come to California or even within California.
You know what is interesting? Every state has its unique challenges. And Monique, I think you are right on. But there are leaders out there across the country who are looking to address those challenges and feel that they have the skills and qualities to meet your needs. So, by keeping it a very open and objective process, you know, and being very upfront with candidates, and that's why our relationship with the board is important. You know, we need to trust the board, and you need to trust us to do a great job. But we need to interview you, get feedback, listen to your community, assess that. And then we go out and start actively recruiting, and I mentioned AASA. But here's some things you need to know. One, over 40% of our associate pool is either women or minorities. Okay? And we keep track of our, of the placements from the districts we work in. 43% over the last 13 years have been women or minorities. Okay? So, our firm has a reputation of being very open, and so, we seek candidates from all areas. We have a very strong relation with ALIS, which is a Latino leader association. We have a very strong association with NAPSI. Okay? The African-American Association. We interview all the candidates from the Broad Foundation, all the graduates. They invite us in to interview all of their candidates. So, in those organizations, many of those leaders work for us. So, when we talk about Santa Barbara, you know, wants to ensure that they get a diverse pool of candidates, they will be out there recommending, "Hey, these are some top individuals from our organizations who may be a good match for Santa Barbara, and you should look at them." So, with the diversity of our team, the diversity, our record, and our objectivity, and our strong recruiting efforts, we will guarantee you that it will be a very diverse pool and people that match up with the needs of your district. And, you know, the financial concerns are almost nationwide. You know- And, you know, the financial concerns are almost nationwide, you know, but in California, they're different, you know? And so that's another thing that we'll have to look at. Okay?
Ms. Parker?
Okay, a few questions. One is, and I'll ask one one at a time. You're based out of the Midwest.
Yes.
I'm only familiar with three California searches that you've done. Are there more that I don't know about? And is there, is it just that you sort of started in the Midwest and are more expanding to the, to the West? Or if you could sort of talk about your work in California?
Sure. We have just basically about a year and a half ago, expanded out into California, to be very honest with you. And Oakland, it was really interesting. I was home and I was actually going to a ballgame one night, and the board president from Oakland called, and we had a three-hour conversation. And he said, you know, we have a great change, and it's a real opportunity. And so that went well, and that's kind of been our start here. So we're all over the country, though. Like right now, we're in Florida, we're in Ohio, we're, I was just in Bismarck, North Dakota last week. So, big change. But we're just expanding, but we think the three searches that we have done have been very, very successful, and we'd love to continue.
Okay. And Mr. Gallo, did you start working for Ray and Associates after the search at Oakland?
Yes, it was afterwards that I, that I was asked to, to join the group.
Okay.
And, you know, Dr. Stan Paus, you know, has served, served a number of years with El Paso Unified. Moved into Dallas, Houston, and so forth, and wound up in Tucson, Arizona as his last term of being superintendent. And he's, he's recognized one of the leaders, that one of the Latino leaders in education throughout the country. So he has access to beyond the current superintendent pools, but also those that are at the deputy or assistant superintendent level. And there's some excellent ones out there. If you're looking for new direction, new leadership, and a commitment, a long-term commitment. And you and I know as elected officials that, that, you know, we're going to need to stay real tight and together for quite a while for this economy to change and public education to receive more support. But we do, you know, at the California School Board Associations, Association, we're very, we're extremely involved with that group, the Gray City Schools, the National School Board Association, ALAS, as you mentioned. Dr. Paus is one of the founders and leaders of that group. So they're always in a network of individuals that want to rise to the occasion of the superintendent level, and they're a quality group. So, so we are in contact all the time.
Okay. And in your California searches, have you done any community forums in Spanish?
We have worked with stakeholder groups and community groups. Yeah, we have associates who can handle that without a problem. And I, oh, let me see, I'm trying to think. I can't remember what district. I was the only non-Spansky-speaking person in the room. But through interpreters, we just had a wonderful session. And I don't know how many individuals raised their hand. They said, "Thank you so much for listening to us. We really appreciated the chance to give input." Yeah, we would have no concern being able to do that.
Okay. And I wasn't too sure from the proposal, does the board see all of the applications? Or do you, do you screen and bring forward like sort of a semifinalist list before we see the applications?
When we come before the board, we would have a group of semifinalists recommend. We have all files with us, okay? So if a board member has any question and says, "You know, I know Jim Jones from such and such a district applied. Can I see his materials?" That's always the board's choice. You know, we do bring a semifinalist to you, though.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'm trying to see if I have under this pile, if I have any other questions for you. I think that's it for now. Thanks.
So, here we go.
Okay, well, I have a couple of questions. First, I was interested in what is your role in helping the board to negotiate the contract once we do settle on a finalist?
One of the things that we like to work with boards is throughout the search, you know, we're very willing to advise the board on potential items for the contract. We have a great deal of experience in looking at key items that should be included or things that you might want to change as you get ready to offer to a new candidate. If you want us to actually develop the contract, we do have a legal staff available that has put together numerous contracts across the country. So we would do that as well. But we try to advise the board all the way through the process on certain items that may or may not be, to be in their contract.
Would it be an additional cost to have your, your legal staff work on the contract?
If it's actually to develop a contract, yes, there'd be an additional charge for that. But as far as just advising on certain elements in the contract, no, that's just part of the fee.
Okay, great. I had another question, which, just quickly, you mentioned your two-year guarantee. I was wondering if you could just explain exactly what you mean by that?
Okay. So within those two years, if the person that you choose to be the next superintendent leaves for any reason, whether it's at the wish of the board, which we certainly hope not, or if it's some emergency that would come up within their own personal life where they would have to leave, if they leave within two years, we would come in and do the search again for expenses only? Okay?
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, I think, was, one of the, you've, the searches that you've done in California have been mostly for large districts. And for example, the Oakland district would be much larger than the Santa Barbara school district. How would you modify the approach that you've taken, or what kinds of things do you think need to be changed to address the needs of a community and a district our size?
I worked, I have worked on searches for districts of 400 to 140,000. And I think what makes it important for us is the little things never change. The thoroughness and the depth of the, the background checks, the getting to know the board, setting up an outstanding profile. None of those things can ever change because those are the critical elements in any search. The size of the district, we've worked with so many districts of similar size and et cetera, that wouldn't be a concern whatsoever. But again, remember, we work for you, okay? So as far as tailoring the search, or if there are little intricacies that you say, you know, "We'd like to do this a little different." We can certainly work with you to make those changes. So each one's different, you know, and sometimes we've had boards that we've gone in for that semi, or finalist meeting, and they, you know, they said they were going to have a second round, and they've said, "No, our candidates are so outstanding, we're ready to make a selection right now." It's not something we recommend, but that's something we've been able to work with districts at that time. In fact, Ontario, Montclair was one of those. They said, "No, we're ready right now, and we're ready to make that selection." Okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Herron? How much time do you spend, do you plan spending in Santa Barbara? Your team, how much time would we expect you to be here?
Well, what we would do initially is come back and have a first meeting with the board and set all the formats that you wish. Then we would be in for as many days as necessary to meet with stakeholder groups and et cetera. Then come back to meet with the board again to make sure that the profile is acceptable to where you are. Then I will tell you, Edward, we're probably for a couple of months or, you know, six weeks, eight weeks, we're off heavily recruiting and, and working on the screening process. But then when we come back in for the finals, when we get to the semifinalists and, and helping you narrow that down in the interview process and then the selection, we're, you will know us very, very well.
And then one other quick question. On the topic of community forums, your, the other approach is you won't get the best candidate because they won't put themselves through that. Do you have a response to that?
Normally, if you, if you ran a community forums early in the process where you had four or five semifinalists, sometimes candidates won't put themselves out there if they're one of five. But normally, what we recommend to a board is you get to that community forum when you're down to that top two or three, okay? Like in Oakland, it was three. And when a candidate knows that they might have the opportunity to be superintendent at Santa Barbara, and they're one of three, they're, 99% of the time, they're willing to put themselves forward. But the other part of that, Edward, that's important is that candidate care. We'll be upfront, if that's the format the board wants to take, we'll be upfront with candidates from day one, okay? Just so you understand, here's the process. And if you make that final three, you'll be before the community, okay? And we just haven't lost anybody in that process because we're upfront with them in the beginning. They know the process, plus they have heard about that we're going to be objective in that, that we, you know, facilitate that in a very professional manner, and it gives them a chance to sell themselves to the public.
Thank you. Ms. Lamont?
So I just want to clarify that I heard correctly. So if we decide to do one or three, you will be here, that's all included. There's no change in the fee, so.
We'll be here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And bilingual staff will be here as well. Thanks.
Any other questions or concerns or comments or clarifications? Oh, okay.
I'd just like to say on behalf of Ray and Associates, we thank you very much. It's been a pleasure, and we would love the opportunity to work with you. We're kind of kid-friendly. I spent almost 30 years with middle school kids. So when we get into this process, our focus is how are we going to do things right for about 16,000 kids? And those are the most important reasons you're sitting there tonight, and it's the most important reason we're standing on this side of the podium. So if, keep that in mind, that would be our focus if we were chosen to do the search. Okay?
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate the time you spent in creating your proposal, which was very thorough, and then also in presenting to us tonight. We hope to make a decision quite soon. So you should be hearing back from us very quickly.
I think I put a business card in each of the papers.
Yes, you did.
So, thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Well, thank you very much, and enjoy our weather. Okay. Okay, our next. Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo. Thank you. Okay, our next interview is scheduled for 6:20, so we have about two minutes. Our presenter is here. Do board members want to engage in any discussion before we bring in the next presenter? Or shall we just move right into the next one? Okay, we will ask Mimi to bring in our next presenter. I think she's doing so.
Board members, the next presentation is from Hazard Young, Atea and Associates, and this is Carolyn McKinnon.
Hello, welcome.
It was last week, too. We've asked our presenters to spend about 15 minutes talking to the board with an introductory presentation, and then let the board ask questions for 30 minutes.
Thank you. And thanks for allowing us to be here tonight to make this presentation. We appreciate being invited. Also appreciate the warm weather and the beautiful day in Santa Barbara. Came down a little early to enjoy some of your hospitality. I'm Carolyn McKinnon. I'm with Hazard Young, Atea and Associates. We're a national search firm. We've been doing searches around the country since about 1987, and in California, probably for the last decade or so. The people I work with, Dr. Rudy Castarida and Dr. Maggie Mahia, we are all California superintendents retired. And so while we work for a firm located in Chicago, we, we are natives, retired superintendents in our area. Dr. Castarida and Dr. Mahia couldn't be here tonight, but they send their greetings. Dr. Castarida was the former county superintendent in San Diego. He was also superintendent in Santa Ana. And he currently holds the endowed Melbo Chair at USC. And both Dr. Mahia and I are USC graduates. We want to talk to you a little bit about what we could do in terms of, better play attention here. Yeah, ready? We wanted to talk to you a little bit about the services we can offer tonight, and also know a little bit about us. We looked at your mission and our mission, and your mission is beautifully displayed out in your foyer. But your mission and our mission are very similar in terms of we focus on what needs to happen for children. And in your case, you're looking for the success of all of your children. You will hold high expectations for them and yourself, and that commitment to excellence. And we want to help you find a superintendent who would hold those same qualities and expectations to help you reach that goal for your children. At a glance, HYA's been serving school districts for the past 20 years. We've done some 800 searches, and many of them are listed in your proposal, not all of them, of course. We are a national network. We have about 100 associates across the country. We serve 27 states. What that brings to you is the opportunity to connect. We can connect quickly with individuals across the state and across the country to learn more about candidates and to recruit candidates who might be a match for you. We have professional relationships up and down the state and across the country. Each of us belong to organizations that allow us to continue to connect and be connected with others, universities. We all work in doctoral programs, Broad Foundation. We're associated with the Association of California School Administrators, CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents, and of course, ALAS, the Association for Latino School Administrators. So we all have lots of connections, and we spend our time continuing to serve children in school districts across the state. We know a little bit about you. It was great to read about some of the things that have happened for you. I read your superintendent's newsletter, and he talked about the accelerated achievement rate for your students. Congratulations. That's wonderful news for all of us. Looked at those API scores. You must be very proud of some of the, of your schools. Was it Measure Q recently you passed in November? That was very nice. I got a little bit of a chuckle out of barely basic aid. And we all know a little bit about the tenuous nature of basic aid, and yeah, you can count on it, but sometimes not a lot. And certainly budget cuts and freezes are, are the way of life. One of the things this tells me as I look at it is that the support you have from your staff, your teaching staff, your support staff, your community staff in terms of those parcel tax bond measures, that's a very good indicator. So when you're recruiting superintendents, to be able to tell them, why would you want to come and live and work in Santa Barbara? And those are some of the good reasons why you'd want to. Certainly, you have challenges. There's not a district in our state that isn't challenged in some way, and your challenges may be many, but you've got a lot going for you. Our commitment to you is to customize our search. And when I say that, we want to meet your unique needs. Every district is unique in our state, and you bring some special uniquenesses. And so when we come to work with you, we're not coming with a canned program. We're coming with a process. But that process is designed to meet your needs, and it's designed so that you can monitor the process. You can tell us what you want to have happen, what you don't want to have happen. Our motto is, "It's your search, we'll do it your way." We'll give you our recommendations. We'll tell you things that have worked for us in the many searches we've done, both in California and out of state, but always recognizing this is your search, and you are in charge of that search. In your folder, you'll see a couple of things. There's a flow chart, and it talks about the phases of the search process. And there are four of them. I'm going to quickly just outline the four phases. The planning phase is that part where we learn about the needs and the goals of the school district in order to plan your search and define your selection criteria. When we finish, we're going to walk away from our first part of this phase knowing what it is you want in your superintendent, and that's that criteria. And we'll do that through the development of a leadership profile. And I'll talk a bit about that in a minute. The recruitment phase is where we go out and identify candidates that meet your unique needs. We don't come to you with people we've been trying to place. We come to you with people that we believe will work for you, that they're a match for you, they would be a good match for you. So our searches are unique in that we, we go out after people that we think would work for you, would be a good superintendent, And frankly, some of them are not looking for jobs. We know folks that we think are ready for a move, that would be a good match. That's always a little tenuous because you want to be careful about recruiting people when they're already working, but for some folks, it's a good time. The selection phase of this process has to do with the assistance, the training and the support for the board in selecting that best candidate. And then we have the appointment phase and we'll do some extensive background checks. And we'll talk about that because that's very important. Site visit and the contract and the announcement of the appointee. The first phase of this process has to do with that planning phase. And in this phase, you can see your responsibilities are there on the far left and ours are on the right. And during this phase, we'll start with the planning phase, which is going over the details of the search. We'll come in and spend a couple of hours with you, going over everything that's going to happen, so you'll know what you need to do, what day it'll happen, where we'll be doing, what will happen, so you can coordinate your calendars and know what's coming in the search process. In this planning meeting, we'll also talk about individual interviews with each of you. We'll want to spend at least an hour with you, going over the kinds of things that you think are important. We look for you to tell to us about the strengths of your district, about the challenges, the issues you face, about the desired characteristics in this person, in your new superintendent, and also tell us about the characteristics, the positive characteristics about your district. This again helps us know that this is the person you want and it also helps candidates know this is what you're looking for. So this is an important part for us. We do focus groups, we'll be, we can hold forums with your community. Once again, you'll direct us as to how you want and who you want us to be involved with. We'll spend four days in your district gathering information for you. You use this information, candidates use the information, and the community uses this information. You're going to have a lot to look and learn about as you hear from each of your constituent groups. We have a survey, an online survey, in addition to the interviews that we do face-to-face. We have an online survey. You have a copy of it in your folder. It's based on what we know about effective superintendents, their characteristics, what makes them successful. It's research-based. It's 41 questions and it's a, looking at each of the strands have to do with particular vision and values, communication. We know that these are the areas that effective people operate around. And so we're trying to get people in your community and people in your school community to tell us what's important to them. Everything there's important, but in your world, in the next year, two years, five years, what we need first is a person who has these. Maybe it's vision and values, maybe it's interpersonal relationships. So the idea is to get people to tell us what's most important to them. And we'll bring that back to you and you'll see that presented in charts and it'll also coordinate with a leadership profile, which will come from those interviews. So you'll get a, and maybe you've seen it, you'll get a report that's many pages. In fact, you'll get to see every comment from the leadership profile that we do, the individual interviews. You'll see all the comments and you'll see all the comments on the survey because question number 42 on that survey is an open-ended question. So there'll be lots of reading for you and you'll be able to learn a lot about what people in your school district think and want you to know. And there's also an opportunity for people to recommend candidates. And we'll look at that. People will say, I think someone would be a good candidate. Find them, invite them, encourage them to apply. We'll publish this survey on our website and we'll hope you'll publish it on your website. We give you the opportunity to bring five or six subgroups. So parents use, sign into one subgroup on your survey, administrators one, community members, faculty staff. Each of them will weigh in on a different link so that you'll see the differences in what each group feels is most important. And you'll get a chance to see that. And we'll also get a chance to compare it with our leadership profile. It's in English and in Spanish and we'll help you if need be, be sure that there's a way for everyone to use a computer. We know everybody doesn't have a computer at home, but we'll work with you on ways to be sure that people have access to that survey so they can give you information. The recruitment phase is, can be a national recruitment or it can be California alone. And you can make that decision if we were fortunate enough to be selected, you can make that decision. During the recruitment phase, we're out looking for candidates that will be a good match. We know lots of people who are looking for jobs, but we're looking for the ones that match the criteria that's been identified on your leadership profile. It's something, this is the person you want to come. We'll be checking those applications as they come along, encouraging people that look interesting, trying to get them. And we'll also be shoulder tapping. We'll talk to people that we think would be a good match for you. One of the things I would also want you to know about the reference checking that goes on, as the candidates come to us in the first round, we do something that's unique in terms of a screening interview. We'll take the top 10 or 15 candidates from your candidate pool. You may have 40, 45. Actually, right now, our pools are running in the mid-40s. So we'll maybe bring in 10 or 15 of the best candidates in terms of paper screen. We'll bring them in and we'll interview them and see which one look like they would be a match for you, look like someone you might want to interview. That's a feature we think gives us a chance to look the candidates over. We also think it's time-consuming for you. We can give you some ideas, we can give you some opinions about the candidates that we viewed and perhaps help you narrow down those. We'll be checking references all the way along. We start right then and there when we first do the pre-screen. We'll check references again after the first and second interview. The selection phase now has to do with picking those candidates that you've chosen. And you can again see your role and our role. Our role is to help you narrow the field. We'll conduct a seminar regarding the interview process and we'll present a slate of candidates to you. The candidates we'll bring to you will probably give you a couple of levels. We'll say, here's a group of people and they seem to be a very good match for you, they seem to have the kinds of things you want. Here's a group of people, they may not have all of the things that we think they might need in terms of experience, background qualities, but there might be people you want to take a look in here. Might be non-traditional candidates, might be someone. We'll give you that information. And occasionally, we'll find a candidate who might have been a successful person, may have encountered some controversy along the way. And, but we'll still let you know about those folks. And sometimes boards say, we understand that there may have been some issues with this candidate, but this person still looks good to us, we'd like to have you bring them in. Our job throughout this process is to give you everything we know about the candidates. That's what you want. You want to know what we know about candidates. And if a candidate comes to us and we have some concerns, but you still have some interest, we'll go to great links to give you the information. So if you hire a candidate that perhaps comes with some things in their background, it won't be a surprise to you. And when I say that, I am not talking about issues, background checks, because we'll do that later. But here, we want to bring to you everything we know about a candidate who may have not been successful in one place or two places. That doesn't mean you won't hire that person, but I promise to bring you a file folder as thick as I can make it in terms of bringing to you all that you need to know to help you make that selection. We want you to know about a candidate at all things that we know and that sometimes can be a little bit of an issue for us. We do another interesting set of interviews. We have that first interview and it's usually the two-hour interview with the standard questions. You can generate the questions, we can help you generate the questions. We have a notebook, you'll get a notebook that will have many questions that can stimulate your thinking. How we generate that candidate, that question list is something we can talk about. The second interview we do, if you like, we do a thing where we bring the candidates in, the finalists now. We bring the finalists in for the second round of interviews with you and we suggest you take them on a tour of the district. Let them, a couple of you, not the whole board, a couple of you take them around, let them see the district, talk. It's an informal conversation. Remember, you spent two hours with them in a formal conversation, answering questions across the table. Now you're going to be perhaps in a car, driving around, showing them some about your community. Get another chance to know that person in an informal way. And you're going to spend a lot of time with this person, so you want to know as much about them and their interpersonal relationships as well. We suggest then you might want to have another interview at the end of the tour, have another interview. This interview would be a little less formal, chance for you to talk about things you, things you didn't get to talk about in the first interview, probe some questions that you'd like some more information about, or go in another direction, just some things you're kind of curious about. And then have dinner. We like the interview first because who wants to eat when you know you're about to have an interview? That's something that many boards find very appealing. If it doesn't appeal to you, we can do the more formal process. But this one for us gets a lot of attention and many boards say, this was the time that they made the real decision when they saw this person over dinner in a casual conversation, get a chance to know them. And candidly speaking, we've had some candidates tell us that even though they didn't get the job, they really felt that they got a chance to be known by the board and they felt like they, it wasn't just the formal interview, it was a chance to be seen and heard as people. And then the appointment phase. Here, these are some critical tasks. That background check we do for every candidate that is your finalist, we don't do it on all of your candidates, but this is that background check that looks for driving record, financial records, arrest records, lawsuits, those sorts of things. The idea is so that if you have a candidate that has some issues, you won't be surprised about it. We've had some surprises, candidly speaking, in our state where people weren't who they claimed to be. So this is a chance for you to know all that you need to know about your candidate's fitness for the office. Doesn't mean the person will be disqualified for something. We all can have something that didn't go right, but it won't be a surprise to you and someone will dig it up. Everybody Googles now. Everybody knows everything about us. So that person, we ask that person, tell us if anything the board should know and when it comes up on the record, they'll know that. A site visit, we recommend a site visit. We think it's the way for you to affirm this is your candidate. Again, another chance to see that candidate, prepare for you, bring you into their current district and give you a chance again to get, to be sure that everything you think you know about the candidate is so. While we don't negotiate the contract, we help candidates prepare that contract. We have resources within some of our professional organizations such as AXA. They do contracts for no cost. Of course, you'll have your attorney and their person will work together, we can put them together. We ask our candidates to bring you a compensation form so that when you get ready to think about offering them the job, you, they've given you a list of the kinds of salary, things they're looking at, what other kinds of benefits they might want, circumstances, so you know that when you settle on that person, there are some things you'll need to negotiate. We'll communicate and we'll give you the search notebook. It's a way for you to keep track of all the material you will receive and you, one of the parts of it is a tab that has about 30 pages that will take you through the entire process from start to finish in terms of the interview, site visit and the protocols. We work with, most of the time, we communicate with the whole board. We do like to have one person designated for contact if we needed to. We'll put a calendar together, you'll know all the dates because it's very important that you all be with us all the time. This is an important job for you, maybe one of your most important, so we don't want of you to schedule a date that you have already planned for spring break or you have something going on. We'll do those interview workshops. We'll meet with you at the end of each interview. We'll come in and talk to you, debrief with you about what you saw in the candidates, help you make some decisions about where to go next. We'll develop a script for you out of those candidate, of those questions that you generate or we help you generate so that you'll, it's an easy way to keep track of what you learned about the candidates and it's very useful to you. And then we'll close the search. I would like to call your attention to the dollar amount. In our search, we have given you an estimate of $21,500 for the search I just described and $21,500. And we estimate our expenses to be about $2,500. There are expenses for advertising and they're outlined in your, in your book. And a full search, if you wanted that search that brings us, keeps us with you and the candidate for a year, that's where that $31,500 figure comes from. And it's outlined in your brochure as well. Each of those are spelled out. Just a quick overview, we talked to you about what we do, how we feel that you're unique and we want to identify people who will be unique to your needs. We'll give you all of the references we know about, we'll keep you, everything will be accurate and fair and critical and confidential. Quick, we guarantee we'll be with you for a year. If you lose a candidate before the year is over, we're back at no cost to you. We would like you to pick up our gas money, but other than that, we come back and do that again. We have another important guarantee and that's that we will not come back and recruit a candidate we place for five years. We don't think it's fair for you to pay us to help you find a superintendent for you and then come and recruit that person. So we'll, now that doesn't mean that you couldn't release a person to apply for another job, but we won't do that without your permission. We think we bring a number of value-added aspects to our search and you can see some of those there. We focus on giving you the kind of leadership and governance you deserve. We commit to you that your search will be a custom search and we do have a national network should you be interested in a search outside. We find that many candidates come, we have lots of experience within our organization of bringing high-quality candidates from out of state as well. We're California first, but we know that people can come back. Many have left the state and are coming back. I'll close now and have an opportunity for you to ask questions.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. McKinnon. And we will again take questions and/or comments from the board. And we can maybe perhaps start with Ms. Parker this time, if you would like to begin.
Okay. The, one of the questions I've been asking is, when you bring us your candidates that you have screened, does the board see all of the applications or are we just going to see the ones that you've sort of narrowed down for us?
You can see all of the applications if you want. What we generally do is bring, we bring the laptop and we can scan through them. There'll be some that we can tell you, they don't complete the application. We know some reason why you probably, they're not going to be there, they're not highly qualified. We think the 10 or 15 we bring you will be those you're going to want to look closely at, but you certainly have the opportunity. Sometimes one person does it. One person sits down and goes through the applications. Could take a little while. So we can do that, we can figure that out if we were fortunate enough to come back and work with you. But yes, you have the right to do that.
Okay. And do you have experience doing Spanish-language community forums?
I'm not a Spanish speaker, but yes, I have worked in Spanish-speaking communities. You may have seen some of my work. Dr. Castarida and Ms. Mahia, Dr. Mahia are both Spanish speakers. And if we, when we are working with Spanish-speaking groups, they would do those interviews, the focus groups after school. We do, usually we have forums after hours for parents, students, we like to have students. So we have two Spanish speakers on our, on our team. Dr. Mahia will be a valuable assistant to us in recruiting as well, as she has northern and southern California connections.
Okay. And one of the things that I appreciated is that it's a national search firm, but extensive California experience, lots of hires and searches over the past several years in California. One of the closest ones to us that I noticed was Oxnard. And Oxnard is one that had difficulties with its superintendent, its new hire. So can you talk a little bit about how that worked out since it was within a year of the search?
We offered the board to come back and do that search and it's their option. We did not go back and work with Oxnard. And I cannot tell you what happened with the board and the superintendent. That's, they're in, I don't know that. So I just have to say, I don't know that. I will tell you that the board went through an extensive process in identifying that candidate, very highly qualified candidate. They went through the same process you did, or you did, you would in terms of knowing everything about the candidate, if there was anything unique and unusual. They had all of the opportunities to get to know the candidates and made that choice. I don't know what went wrong in that first few months. Perhaps if you know some of the board members, they would share that with you.
I doubt it. But thank you, I just wanted to be, so they... I just wanted to be, so they did get the offer for you to go back and redo it for gas?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Lamone?
I have a couple of specific questions. Did I understand correctly and you talked about being with the district for four days to gather information? Is that, and in those four days, how exactly would you be gathering information? Is that inclusive of potential forums? Is that, everything happens in four days or just initial first four days?
In those first four days, we'd come into your district and we would, with your guidance, you would, during our planning meeting, you would look over, who do you want us to interview? Who do you want us to have personal interviews with? We recommend the board, of course. Do you want us to personally interview assistant superintendents, administrators, community members? You'll, we'll give you a list of all the possibilities and you'll say, we want you to meet with these people, the mayor, the city manager, perhaps someone from higher ed. So in those four days, we will all, we'll go our own separate ways, so to speak, interviewing people for the leadership profile. And that's the one where people, we'll get information about your strengths, your challenges and issues, desired characteristics and positive characteristics about the district. You'll see all those comments. Each comment, all of the comments will be divided by subgroups. So the administrators all think this, the faculty all think this, the board thinks this, about each of the topics. And then from that information, we will pull out the consistent themes. So you'll see everyone thinks you've got a great district. Everyone thinks your kids are grand. Everyone's worried about money. And then you'll find things that we don't all agree on. And so you will have a lot of information. Do all of you agree, all of you agree on this, but you don't all agree on other things? And in that leadership profile, we'll signal some of those things that we think are important. And this is not statistically based. We're not researchers. But we'll tell you what we, what we've learned about what people think and value and what issues they have and concerns they have. And some may be different. Some may see most important thing in this district is a superintendent with vision. Others may say, that's not most important. What's most important is someone who is an instructional leader. Or no, we don't need an instructional leader. We have many people that can do that. We need someone who can do the personal relationships, who can get out there and spread the good word, be media savvy. So you get a lot of information, but you'll direct us as to who you want us to interview. We won't just go on our own.
So in the event that all the information gathering didn't happen in four days, would that then be an additional cost or is that part?
Well, if you ask us to come back many, many more days, it's not unique that we would, you would, we'd say, gee, we didn't get to finish. You know, there's three or four more people. We'll come back and do some more. Sometimes we can do telephone. I can, there may be someone I can't get to. I can have a telephone interview. But we won't shut the door on valuable information.
And this is independent of a possible community forum? Should the board?
We usually assume that there'll be some, an evening or two where you will want to have your doors open so people can come in. We'd also want to have your student forums. And we also want to look at non-traditional leaders. We love the leadership team, kids, kids that take leadership class. But you have some non-traditional leaders and we want those young people to also come and talk to us about, about what they want and desire in their superintendent.
And on that note of non-traditional leadership, how do you think you could, or what specific strategies would you take as a firm in ensuring that the applicant pool is diverse and considers non-traditional candidates?
Well, we have some, we have some strategies, of course, and we are, all of us are members of some organization and you might have noticed the Broad Foundation is one that we have some connection with in terms of finding non-traditional candidates or people are coming in from other areas. But we have a history of engaging diverse people within our organization and people from outside our organization. We have 20 minority associates in our, of our 100 associates and we have two of them, the founder of the National Alliance for Black Schooled Educators. He's one of ours. We have several members of the Association of Latino Administrators and Supervisors. Dr. Darlene Robles is one of our associates and Elizabeth Molina-Morban, she's one of our associates. We have all placed, I most recently had the pleasure of placing a minority candidate in a search I just completed. We have a long history and we have placed people of African-American, Latino, Latina religions. There are just lots of opportunities for us and we take a great deal of pride in being a firm that reaches out. We want to bring people in, particularly if they represent the student body. It's, it's very powerful for students and communities to have people at the top levels administering the district. It's very powerful.
Thank you.
We can provide you, if you'd like, I can provide for you statistics that would give you our success in terms of how many candidates and what categories. If you'd like to have that, I can get you a copy of that.
Sure.
Okay. You can let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
Speaking of diverse, do you have any mechanism to find candidates that are astutely concerned with special education?
Yes. If that comes across, if that's a characteristic that you desire, if that's an issue in your district, when that criteria, when we establish that criteria, that will be, that will be our trigger, so to speak, in terms of these are the characteristics, the experiences, the skill set that we want that person to have in special ed. Many, it's interesting how many candidates come from special ed background.
Topic of forums, how does your firm feel about having a forum for the top two or three candidates in the community?
We don't recommend that. I will say this, if you do bring, if you decide to bring the top three candidates in and interview them, we realize that they are no longer subject to any sort of confidentiality. Prior to that time, we, we do try to keep our candidates confidential. You'll lose some of your candidates. They cannot be, they can't risk leaving their district and having people know about that. I'm sure you've experienced that. It sometimes feels like if you, I wanted to leave, but I didn't get the job, so I'm not going to come back and work for you. But serious candidates are willing to expose themselves. It would be up to a candidate to tell us if they would participate that. And if you wanted to do that, we would tell them upfront, this would be something this board would like to have happen. So candidates would know going into it, that's a possibility. It's not something we do on a regular basis.
You've mentioned if we want a national search. Why wouldn't we want a national search?
I don't know. I think you would want a national search. Once in a while, you find people who say, we only want you to recruit in California. But we think a national search is, why not? It's all the same kind of search. We will get candidates from across the country. If you were not doing a national search, perhaps you wouldn't advertise in some publications. But having said that, I'd still advertise even if I were just doing a California search. Edweek is one of them. We sample, where do we get our most referrals? And on our, our application process is all online. We don't do, we don't do paper. But we find AASAs, American Association for School Administrators, Edweek and EdCal are the places we get our most referrals. And so even in California, Edweek is a very good source for us. California superintendents, many of them have, it's on the coffee table in their offices. They get Edweek. Everybody shares it because it's a fairly expensive publication. But it's a good source and we would recommend that even if you're just, if you only want to recruit in California.
I'm very impressed with your, your profile online survey. What type of response do you typically get? I mean, do you get hundreds, thousands of responses?
Well, sometimes it depends on the activity within the district. Just because you're a large district doesn't necessarily mean you'll get the most. Sometimes smaller districts generate several hundred. Having said that, it really depends on how much we get the word out to people and we think that's a very good tool. It signals, for one thing, it signals there's a search going on and everyone may not know that. They, they just may not be informed. So when you get the word that the survey is on the district's website or it's at the schools, as we can generate some interest there, people know a search is going on and it gives everyone a chance. Not everyone can be interviewed. Not everyone can have, play an obvious role, but everyone that wants to can fill out that survey. And question 42 is open-ended. Tell the board what it is you want them to know. And sometimes you have things that perhaps is not search-related as much, but it's, it's a way for people to communicate with you. You might get several hundred. You may get 120. The other thing, you can't really know and I'll be clear, you can say you are a board member, you are a community member, you might be a parent. So you could get three bites of the apple, so to speak. If someone wanted to fill out that survey three times, they could. So we can't, we cannot identify that the survey is a unique class, but, and each subgroup counts the same. So if I got 100 faculty and staff and I got five community members, they each get their own graph and chart so you can see, so when you, when you compare what 100 people think was what five people think, you'll take that information in that content.
Thank you.
But each of them are unique.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Parker?
Can I just follow up really quickly on that? So with the online surveys, there's no guarantee. It's like a regular, like a newspaper survey that you see online these days where they're actually not statistically accurate because one person can put in multiple.
If you wanted, if someone could take the time to do 100, they could.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, I have, I'm just making some notes. I have just a quick couple of questions. One is your, I also really like your survey, but I was wondering, and I imagine you've had a great deal of success with it, but if our district wanted to modify the survey to more, perhaps more accurately reflect some of the issues that we feel are of significant concern, could we do that?
You could modify the search. This search is all done computer-wise, but you may not want to use this search. There are districts that say, we don't want to use that one. We're going to do, you know, the monkey survey or zoom-a-rang. So if you chose another survey, you could do that, surely.
Okay.
This one is not such that I can manipulate it in the sense of adding new questions, but we can do it, you can do a survey of any other kind.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I also had a question. It follows up a little bit on a question that Ms. Lamone asked. I was wondering, what specific steps do you take? What specific things do you do to ensure a diverse pool? And how, and you mentioned that you have successfully placed a number of underrepresented candidates from underrepresented groups. But what are some of the steps that you take to make sure that the pool itself is diverse?
Well, we'll first, in California, we have contact, I have a personal relationship with CALSA, that's our California Association. So when I get a search, one of the first places I go is to my friend at CALSA and say, help me, will you talk to members of your organization? Can we put something out? The same thing with LAS. We have contacts there. We work with those folks. We ask them, will you help us? We also put information out to our 100 associates across the country. We give them the criteria and we tell them the board is particularly interested in a diverse candidate pool. Can you help us there? I work with AXA, Association of California School Administrators. I have the opportunity to be in touch with all of the 19 regions in our state. I have the opportunity to share that we are looking for candidates. We are particularly interested in diverse candidates. We all have a list. We all have our, our own little rolodex. So I will send a note out to, you know, to the recipients online, as will Dr. Castrita and Maggie. We all send our, our note out saying, these are people we know and have helped us in the past. We'll all send our, our notes to them, you know, our list servants say, this is what we're looking for. Can you help us? Candidly speaking, we do that in most searches, but particularly when we are looking for candidates, diversity, diverse candidates, candidates of color, we do, we look, we make it a point and we're doing that more and more. So we have, we're each developing a reservoir of places and people to go to. And then word of mouth also, I know guys and gals that I, around the state that I call, county offices help us sometimes because they, they know who's in the county.
Thank you. And I just wanted to ask maybe a couple of questions. We have a board member who is missing and she is, fortunately for her, in China. And, but we are sorry to have her missing. But she drafted a few questions that haven't been touched on yet that she wanted to know about. One of them was, if you could, would you please explain what your firm's role would be in drafting the superintendent's contract?
We don't, we start with that compensation form, which we ask the candidate, tell us what you, what you want. We then put you in, your attorney and you'll start the first, the process will start with you. You'll, you most likely with your counsel, you will present an offer to this person based on what you think and believe that, that might be something appealing to them. And then we will offer to the candidate the opportunity to work through AXA or through an attorney. We always encourage our clients to be, use school attorneys and use California attorneys because it's, in our experience, it works much better that way. So we put the two together and then if necessary, sometimes the two just, your attorney and the AXA person just, they take it from there. I would sometimes work with the candidate, helping them traverse the language, why, why would you do this? Why wouldn't you do this? We are not actually, we don't negotiate, but we facilitate and we coach a little bit. Sometimes people want to, want to ask for things that perhaps aren't reasonable. And in this climate, contract negotiations are changing significantly. We're, we're seeing boards being much more conservative in contracts. So we try to help people through our, sticking with them, telephone meeting, whatever needs to happen. But it's not our job to negotiate because we're not attorneys, but it is our job to help the candidate work with your attorney. We do work for you, but we know you want us to help the candidate. Many of them have not had that experience. Experienced superintendents, they'll do just fine, but some of these folks haven't had that experience. We don't recommend our candidates go get an attorney, frankly. We think that you'll treat them well and that AXA will help them.
And then one question you touched on, that if you have recently placed a candidate or as, for example, if you were to place a candidate for us, that then you would not recruit that candidate for further placement for a period of, I think you said five years, right? What if we wanted to recruit somebody that you had previously placed? Or if that person just heard about the, the position and applied on their own? How would that, how would you deal with that?
I would go to the candidate and say to you, I'm not able, I cannot place you in a candidate pool. I have made a commitment. My firm has made a commitment. If your board sends us a letter and says we release candidate A to apply for this job, we'd be glad to work with that candidate. Not without the blessing of the board. We don't do that.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Parker?
Sorry, I've got one more sort of set of questions around references. With references, does, does the candidate supply the references to you? Do they come, where do they come from? And then when you say that you do reference checks, do you call those references? What kind of time do you spend with those references, written or telephone or?
On the application, candidates are asked to give references, a minimum of three, four, five, however many they wish. They can place those, those letters of reference on our website. They're part of the application process. Those are important. We view them. We take that into account. We talk to the candidates about the possibility at some point in time, after the, perhaps after the pre-screen, we will begin to go off their list. We need, we can't just rely on written references. Sometimes you'll call and you get, you talk to someone, they give you some information. They might lead you in a direction, which means you may have to make several more calls to follow that direction. We talk to people up and down the state. Sometimes they are board members, they may be community members, they may be county office people, whatever the, wherever it takes us. And you might need to make many, many phone calls and I had a situation where I had a candidate who was controversial and a board wanted to hire. a candidate who was controversial and a board wanted to hire him. I don't have any idea how many calls I made, and I, I did what they call a Nexus Lexis, you may be familiar with that. It's a huge information bank about someone, so that if you're going to hire this person, you need to be sure you, you know all about it. It depends on, there's no limit to the number of references, and it takes over a period of days. And then we will bring to you a synthesis of what we've learned about the person, their personal characteristics, their professional skills, attributes, good qualities about them, personal qualities. And then we'll tell you what people, you know, what's the worst thing you can tell me about this person? Because you need, and the worst thing they, you know, other than I work too much, there are, sometimes there are clues there, you, and there may be, they're positive. Sometimes your greatest strength is your greatest weakness also. So there's no limit, there's no magic number, but there'll be many, many opportunities. We call many people to chase a lead. I don't mean that in this, it is a bit like investigation, but, and we also know people, and people are willing to talk to you because I trust you and you trust me. You have to establish relationships so that people are willing to tell you things. These are all confidential. You will not know, I will not come to you, when we present, we will not say, Annette told me that you do this or that. We will tell you that we spoke to superintendents, board members, administrators, union leaders. We'll give you the lineup, but we won't say who said what. Otherwise, people wouldn't be candid with you.
That's true.
One, one further question.
Mr. Herron?
What role does your company play in helping us determine a competitive compensation package?
Well, we'll, we of course can look around the area, we have some comparisons, excuse me, of salaries that are currently being offered, and of course, in our work, we have compiled significant information about, a database about contracts, and I don't mean that in this, in a formal sense, but we collect contracts, our work with AXA, we know a bit about the going rate in terms of counties. Some counties are much, much lower, some counties are higher. A bigger district may not necessarily pay any better than some of the smaller districts, their basic aid district. There's a lot of variables that go into that salary range.
That's what I'm asking, how you go help us?
We'll help you in terms of giving you some idea about what the going rate is and what people are getting now, what kinds of benefits they're getting, what kinds of, you know, what perks are still being used. There's some new legislation that might change all of that, you may be following some of that in terms of superintendent's contracts may be legislated in, this is the second time it's come before the legislature. So there's a, some, some contract negotiations now may be, may change a bit based on what's happening with that piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I appreciate so much.
We will be making our decision, we're hoping to make it very, very quickly, so you should be hearing back from us very soon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have time scheduled for a break.
Yes, we will now take a break. We have scheduled ten minutes, however, our next presentation is scheduled to start at seven fifteen. Do, do we want to take the full ten minutes and just start the presentation a little bit late? Or, okay, so if we can, if we can let the next presenter know that we will be starting five minutes late because we are going to take our full ten minutes. Thank you very much, and we will return in ten minutes. Second, this third presentation from Leadership Associates, and we will wait until everybody is set up.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, thank you for, for coming.
Thank you.
To present to us this evening.
For the opportunity.
Okay. Dr. Sarvis, would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure, this is Rini Townsend and Rich Thome.
Good, perfect, all right. Thank you again for the opportunity to offer what we have for you, and it's a pleasure to be here, and we know that you've allotted fifteen minutes for the presentation and have some questions that you sent in the letter, and we'll try to address those in the course of our presentation and leave the rest of the time that you have for questions. So first of all, let me just tell you a little bit more about who we are. You have our bios, I'm Rini Townsend, and I'm Managing Partner of Leadership Associates, and I've been doing these searches for many, many years, and this is Rich Thome, who is also a partner in our firm. And one of your questions was, could somebody meet with people and speak in Spanish? And he's a fluent Spanish speaker, and welcome you to ask him questions in Spanish to be sure that he really does know how to do that. He teaches me as we drive back and forth, and I'm learning a little bit. So what we thought we would do is actually use the couple pages in the proposal that we sent you, and it's the part, it's a few pages in, they're not numbered, but it says, overview of superintendent search process, and kind of walk through the key areas. And of course, in our cover letter, what we talked about was four key areas that we work with the board and give you our guidance so that you can make your best decisions about how to handle each phase. And those things are developing the profile, which we would do with you, we'd meet with you and at your very first meeting with us, if you, we were lucky enough to be selected. And you would tell us what are the qualities, characteristics, background, and experiences that you want in your next superintendent. And we would record all of those, and we would also, that evening, go through the timeline to make sure that everything was set up and that your calendars were clear and the key dates that we needed to meet with you. Then another piece of it then is meeting with your community and staff groups and getting this, asking them the same questions we asked you. And we develop a report that you would have with all of that information in it. And then we'd mail that to your homes, along with all the other kind of input we receive through faxes and emails and all that kind of thing. And then recruiting and reference checking, very, very critical. And then the other thing is to be with you through the entire process, from the very first meeting through the completion of the community visit and the wrap-up of actually hiring the superintendent. And then some work with the new superintendent after he or she is selected. So in a nutshell, that's the overview. And if we, if you return to that two-page overview of superintendent search process for the Board of Trustees, Rich and I are going to kind of take turns and quickly walk through those pieces. I actually kind of went through the first section, the initial meeting with you, and that's really to set the tone and the timelines for everything, and so I think that's fairly self-explanatory. So I'm going to let Rich talk to you a little bit more about the community and staff input time.
Great. One of the things that we're fortunate to have done is to have completed more than a couple hundred searches. And as you know, over that span of experience, you develop systems. You begin to get more efficient and more effective in what you do. And what you see on these pages is kind of the summary of what are those key points? What is going to really end up with the best pool of candidates and the best superintendent for a school district? So after the initial meeting with the board in which we asked you about qualities and characteristics and any issues that the new superintendent's going to face, which is a very important meeting, that was interesting. Everybody alive out there? We then spent a great deal of time with you at that meeting to define which groups are of most interest to you. What, who are the people in the community and on your staff that you really want us to talk to, to make sure that we are developing a very, very good profile? And it changes really with every group. Sometimes we're in, toward the end of the day in the community input process, and we'll hear something that informs us even after hearing, you know, a whole number of groups throughout the day. So that community and staff input process is a real critical pillar in our search process because we bring back to you in written form a summary of what the characteristics and qualities were and the perception of what the issues are that the new superintendent's going to have to deal with. So that pillar being done is a real critical component. And as Rini indicated, every part of your community here will be involved in the searches we've done in, in this area. We've had good feedback from our Spanish-speaking population, and there's been a great deal of input from them. We don't limit our community input and staff input just to the people that can make the meetings. We try and make available the telephone, email, they have our cards, we're, in fact, we publish our number so that people can call us or write us or email us, and they often do. And sometimes people just don't have time to come to a community meeting to say, this is what I think the next superintendent should have, and these are the issues. We also make sure that if, if there's any folks that can't make it and you want us to call, key leaders in the community, key stakeholders within the schools, whatever the case may be, we pick up the phone and call. And that is a real important pillar, and again, we're kind of building this, this search through these pillars, and that's a real critical piece of that. So, and we'll talk more if you have any questions about that.
Sure. And then the position description is developed from what you tell us and what we learn from the community and staff input. And, you know, each district and community is unique, and we've had the good fortune of working with some other school districts in this county, and I see a wonderful school board member here from Montecito, and they had a unique situation in their district, Alita had a unique situation, you do. So it's important that what we do is reflect the uniqueness of the school district because then when we go out to recruit and do the reference checking, there are some wonderful leaders who may or may not be a match for your school district. So that's why this understanding as much as we can about what you're looking for and what others are looking for is important. And then we would want to have that position description on our website and on your website. So anybody can access the information and download what it is that you're looking for.
One of the key elements that we believe we offer is the recruitment function. We have a very powerful network in the state of California, the nine partners, each are located throughout the state, and each of them have reference groups, if you know what I'm saying. They have people that they've worked with, they have searches that they've done. And so our population of, of people that we recruit from is pretty broad. So that recruitment function is one of the main reasons you would even think about hiring a search firm. Who are they going to bring us? What doors are they going to knock on? Are they just going to wait for applications to come in? That's not how we operate. Immediately after getting the search, we talk to our partners and everybody gets on the phone. We're the leads and we'll do most of the lead calling and so forth, but we'll get all of that from them to make sure that we start with a very long list of possibilities that we narrow down and narrow down and narrow down to, to a group that you, that you would, would want to interview. You'll know everybody that applied, of course, and you'll know our perceptions of which group would be the group to bring before you in terms of interview, and you can choose from them or anyone else that applied, of course. So that recruitment is a key, is a key component. It is the network, and it's not a group of just selected people, but it's the ability to get out and who are the strong superintendents that may be contemplating a move? Who are the superintendents that aren't contemplating a move that we, after hearing the profile, know are definite match for you? Now, we'll call them up and we'll say, think about this, it's a great job, great board, great community, great opportunity, and we will call those people to make sure. We do a thorough job of reference checking. We make sure that there are no surprises when we bring applicants to you and recruits to you. So we do that full reference checking, we use Lexis Nexis, and to make sure that if there's anything published anywhere, we'll know about it. And that's in addition to what our partners will find out, being in the area, if it's someone from out of our area. In our area, we'll know the candidates and just about everything that they've done in their careers, in addition to which we'll do that Lexis Nexis searching. Advertising, we advertise primarily in EdCal, which is a national publication. I mean, it's California publication, as you know, but it has national exposure. And we also have the ability through our website, of course, to post. Quite often, people pick up our site and post in different parts. We've, we've done a good job of out-of-state recruiting, if that's your desire, for us to look nationally. We certainly have brought a number of candidates back to searches from out-of-state, which is an important thing for you to know. And I think that's about it on our strategies and how we use our network to get the best candidates for you.
And if you were to look on our website, leadershipassociates.org, you would see in the bios of all of our partners, all the different affiliations that we have with various networks of CALSA members and African-American and so on. So to include, make sure that we have a diverse group of people that we're connected with. And Rich did mention about contacting successful superintendents and so on. There are also, one of the things we'd ask at that first meeting with you is, are you also interested in assistant superintendents? Are you interested in deputies? You know, what kind of, who are you interested in so that we can cast the broadest net possible? And there are some boards that have wanted to look at non-traditional candidates, we'd ask you that, is that something that you're interested in? So those are the kinds of things that you would tell us that would help frame this overall process. Then the selection of the finalists, as Rich said, everybody who applies, you would see the papers of everybody. But we also will tell you the folks that we will recommend to you as the best match based on the profile, the reference checking and all of that. But ultimately, it's your decision of who you're going to interview. And one of your questions in the letter was about developing questions for the interviews, and what we would do is bring you some suggested questions for you to work from, because it's kind of hard to sit and just develop questions. And it would, again, be based on the profile, the kinds of things you're looking for in your next superintendent, the issues and challenges ahead, how are they prepared to meet those? So we would bring you those questions, modify, go over them with you that evening where you select candidates, modify them as you wish to make sure everything is, is in place, and then bring back all those materials to the interview day so that you'd have everything fresh, just the way that you want to have it happen. And then the same with the final interviews, we would be there with you all day. There are some firms that are not there, you do it on your own. We believe we need to be there just to handle the logistics of the day, because what we want to do is help the candidates come in and out and talk to them and get their cell phone numbers and do all those kinds of things. So all you have to do is pay attention to the interview. You don't have to worry about all the other logistics, because that, your big job is picking who your finalists are going to be. And we'd help you with the questions too for the second round. The first round of questions, everybody would be asked the identical questions so you can compare their answers. The second round, if you bring back two finalists, it's a wide open, it's much more of a dialogue, and they'll ask you questions and you'll ask them questions. So those are the pieces, and then, do you want to talk about the visit to the district and the contract? And we'll be ready for questions.
Yeah, our experience has taught us that as we walk through the process, you get to the point where there's an individual that is your finalist. And so the day of the interviews, you pick a finalist, because it isn't over until you've visited the candidate's work site, the district. So you can ask questions face-to-face, verify and validate everything you've seen in the paperwork, every reference letter, everything that we've told you, we've gotten from our own telephone references and personal references, and you get to verify that in that finalist's visit. Is the person still just a finalist? After that, visit then, and you choose someone, we will discuss with you the contract parameters. And, you know, we're not lawyers and we don't put together the contract, we recommend your counsel does that, of course, but we make sure that there are, there's no confusion about where you want to go with the superintendent's contract and where your selected candidate wants to go. So that it goes right to the very end with, with the, all the details, everything ironed out so that it's a nice happy ending to, to the story.
Right. And then one of your other questions, and we have it here after the new superintendent is signed, is that we will help the new superintendent with their hundred-day entry plan. What are the best things to do and help them develop an initial plan that then they would want to work with you about to finish filling out that plan, so that they have a really good entry? One of the other things, the community input and staff input report that we give to you, we keep a copy of that for the new superintendent after he or she is selected and give them that report, because it's incredibly helpful. Rich went through that process, I went through that process in my last superintendency, and it was a wonderful way for me to know about what each kind of group and individuals cared about in the district. So there are multiple ways that we do that. We also recommend in the contract that there be governance workshops so that you all get off to a great start about whose job is what, and then have a very strong evaluation component in the contract. Those are some pieces we think are really important, and we're available to help with any pieces of that if the board should so choose. So that, I think we touched on the questions that you asked.
One of the things that, that obviously occurs when you've chosen a search firm is you go back to your daily lives and your jobs and you have given someone the responsibility of recruiting and bringing you, bringing you candidates. of recruiting and bringing you candidates. And communication is critical to us. So we'll make sure that there's ongoing communication, that you get reports on a periodic basis that were available 24/7, maybe not the AM hours, but were available to answer your questions. If you have questions, if something comes up, if there's an issue within the community that comes up and you say, "Wow, I need a little more information before I respond to that," we're available to do that. So it's a real high priority for us.
And we do, and Rich raised a good point, we do send you periodic updates throughout the search so you know what's going on, even during the quiet periods when we're recruiting and reference checking and you're wondering what's going on. We'll let you know how it's coming along so that you hear from us and you're free to contact us at any time. I think those are the key points. Why don't we stop and let you ask whatever questions you have of us?
Okay. Ms. Lamone, would you like to begin this time?
Well, thank you for that information. You mentioned that based on what we wanted to do, you could either do a in-state or national search. Is there a difference or additional cost for that? Or is that, it's just?
No, it's all.
Can you, thank you. Can you talk to us a little bit about any guarantees you may have post-selection?
Sure. What we have said is up to a year after the person has been selected, as long as the board is the same, and if it doesn't work out, that we'll come back for expenses only and redo the search.
Even in the case that it was not a match?
Right.
Okay. And you mentioned a little bit about targeting certain organizations to increase the diverse applicant pool. Do you have more specifics on how you might be able to do that?
Most of it, frankly, is through the huge network of people that we know. I mean, one of the things that we do periodically is have lunches with superintendents who have become superintendents through the process, the Leadership Associates process, the boards have selected them, and talk to them about who else is out there. First of all, part of our purpose in doing that is to get feedback on the process, you know, what would help us be a better search firm and that kind of thing. And then who all is out there? Who are the contacts? And frankly, a lot of the people that we've worked with have wonderful contacts. And then, and then we are members of suburban school superintendents. I've been on the Avid Board, other kinds of national boards, a couple that are involved with national organizations. CALSA, quite a number of us, our whole organization is a member of CALSA. What else? What are?
And that's the Association of Latinas School Administrators.
Latinas, yeah, school administrators, and then AXA, of course. But a lot of it is just who you know and how deeply you know the whole field. And we have good relationships with all the various counties and superintendents throughout. So it's really through all of that. But again, it's going to depend on what you, as a board, want us to do, and then we can tell you some specifics based on what you want and where else we can look. But we do advertise in some of those others, you know, through people that we know.
You've done some work locally and also in the state. And how do you, or what are your thoughts on providing as unbiased, impartial search for our district? And I guess that the background is that we've heard both from board and community that perhaps because there has been an affiliation in your firm with someone who's local, there may be a perception, perhaps not actual, but perception. How would you respond? How would you navigate a situation like that?
The best thing is by us working, first of all, with any district, regardless of what anybody hears out there, the best thing is that we meet with you, we listen to you and what you're looking for and where you're headed in the future. And then we listen to people, staff people and community people about where this district wants to go and try to give them, here's, regardless of whatever the history is, here's where they are right now, here's where they want to go, this is what they're looking for. If we didn't, through our own kind of checking, realize that this was a great opportunity, we would not have put in a proposal. Because one of the things we want to be able to do is tell people it's a good job. You know, you want, and then we're going to tell them everything, all the challenges that they will face. There is no district in California without major challenges, but what are the ones here? And what skills is it going to take to be able to lead this district into the future? I don't know if that's enough for you, but it's my learning about you.
And one of the things is that we start with, you give us the profile. If you want somebody that's worked in a culturally diverse environment or that themselves are culturally diverse, whatever you're, you decide the profile is, we start every search with a wide open, everybody, there are no preconceived candidates or people that we think are the top ones. We know quickly, once we see the profile, who some of the better ones are, but we don't have anyone in mind and say, "Well, that's the one we want to line the search around that person." That we don't do. They're all wide open searches and they start from scratch. Is that addressed what you were saying a little?
I think in part. And I think that the perception might also be that it might be more internal. Yeah. And I'm just wondering how you would navigate that kind of response with the community.
If there's an internal candidate as a possibility?
No, sorry. Let me be real specific. You have someone working for your firm that has been associated with our school district. And so if the community wanted to feel that there was a sense of unbiased, impartial, that wouldn't be brought into it, how would you navigate in response to that?
Yeah. I mean, that's really easy. That's just really easy. We learn about where you are right now and where you are going forward and whatever. I mean, we all were in other districts. And so, you know, I mean, one of the things we don't do is we don't do searches in the districts where we were superintendents because we just think there shouldn't be any tie. Because, you know, you want to go into it as wide open as you can, and, you know, we all had experiences that were pluses and minuses, but that's the past. So we need to look now and looking forward.
Thank you.